The meeting, or the special meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, that's a 15-yard penalty and a possible fine.
I second.
All in favor? Okay, so before we have our roll call, I need to read a resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Steve Ryback as temporary Board Secretary for this meeting in accordance with NJSA 18A:16-1.1. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
So, and Chiarella, Jill D'Amio, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then Mr. Ryback is our temporary Board Secretary this evening. Thank you, Mr. Ryback, and we will have a roll call.
Ms. Armignio?
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella?
Here.
Mrs. D'Amio?
Here.
Mrs. Kalaponowicz?
Here.
Mrs. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Quarino?
Here.
I'm here. Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Rutzke?
I too am here.
Madam Board President, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 18, 2018, at all schools, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Okay, at this time, we have three resolutions to read, or we don't, Ms. Armignio?
Yes. I am unfortunately compelled to bring this up. I asked earlier by email about the meeting. Now, I understand this is a special meeting, and our counsel just represented that I might be incorrect. However, I will express my disappointment that there are three public forums in our district policy at the conduct of meeting, Policy 0164, and on tonight's agenda, there's only one public meeting.
Public forum, you mean.
I'm sorry, one public forum, yes. And I think we've had outcries from the public on a regular basis as to the public being able to speak, when they speak, and what topics they can speak on. I understand that the forum will be open to anything, not just agenda items. However, I do object to only one forum. I was told that it was, it's a special meeting, and that changes the rules, but I respectfully disagree. We have a policy in place. I think a special meeting is called for special business, and under the Open Public Meetings Act, you just have to give certain notice because it's not generally on the calendar of meetings. I think that's the only real difference of a public meeting. Again, I was informed by our attorney that I might be mistaken, however, for the, this is not going to benefit me, this benefits the public, and I think that we're starting to see a pattern where the public is denied access to the board via public forum, and it's starting to be disturbing that the last meeting, there were only two public forums on the agenda, and tonight, there's only one. So I would like that to be in the minutes, that I had an objection to the only one, and apparently, it's not going to change because I asked the president prior to the meeting to please change it, and she said she would not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armignio. I did check with our attorney, and this is the appropriate agenda for a special meeting. We have three resolutions. We're not going to read them, we're only going to vote for them, so within a few minutes, we'll be going to the public forum, which anybody could speak to anything on the agenda. It is something that we have always done, it's past practice, and again, attorney advice that I am going by.
And since you said past practice, again, I'm an advocate of just because it's been past practice, doesn't mean it's been correct practice.
And I'd just like to clarify that at the last board meeting, we did have three public forums. Yes, we do. We always have one for agenda items, we have one before we go into closed session, and we have one when we come out of closed session for closed session items only.
I'll check the minutes, thank you.
And that is in policy.
Yeah.
Yes. So at this time, we're going to move a motion for, to authorize professional development. That's number five on the agenda. I don't, we've never read these in the past before, I don't, unless somebody needs me to read this, I don't think we need to. There's agendas out in the public, so I would need a motion and a second to authorize professional development.
I would second that.
Jill D'Amio and Mr. Rutzke. Is there any comments or questions?
Can we just read for the public the title at least?
Yes.
That's number five?
It's number five, Motion to Authorize Professional Development.
And that's for travel expenses resolution, right, for a member of the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call, Mr. Ryback?
Mrs. Armignio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. D'Amio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Recuse.
Yeah, got it. Ms. Quarino?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalaponowicz?
Yes.
Madam President, a motion passes.
Thank you. The second, number six on the agenda, is a motion to participate in insurance consortium through New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. This information on this was sent to all the board members via email from Mr. Gorski on Monday. So there, I need a motion and a second on this. Motion, Mrs. Lang?
I'll second that one, too.
Second by Mr. Rutzke. Any comments or questions on this?
How often does this come up? Is it every three years?
I'm honestly not sure. I don't know if this is a yearly one, or it's every, oh.
I believe it's, in the notes, it was three years, is I think the way it was presented from Mr. Gorski.
Yes, I am getting an affirmative by the board attorney. Thank you.
Something we already have, it's just being renewed?
Yes, we're just renewing this, and it saves us, oh, I thought there was a number, but I believe it saves us over $1 million a year by participating in this consortium.
And it ends July 1, 2021?
So it's for three years. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you withdraw at any time?
I do not know the answer to that.
Well, I think that's an important question. If we're going to be stuck for a few years, and we're not doing well by this policy, then it's not a good idea.
We're already in it now. We're already participating now. I don't know how long we've been participating, but this is just a renewal to continue to stay in this.
Yeah, but that, okay, you want to call me? That doesn't, that doesn't change Mr. Ryback's question.
I understand that, but I do not have the answer to that question.
It's just a different answer.
Okay, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Ryback?
Sure. Ms. Armignio?
This is the NJSIG, right?
Yes.
All right, well, I'll say yes.
Okay, Mr. Braverman?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. D'Amio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Quarino?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Russo?
I'll abstain, too, because we haven't been given enough background information. I understand it's a renewal, but again, it goes back to that, who's selecting these options? Is it only one person selecting them? So I think we need a little more background in that. It's quite a big price tag for this as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalaponowicz?
Yes.
Madam President, motion passes.
Okay, number seven, motion to become a member of the Fair Funding Action Committee. And I'll, I can explain this after motion and a second.
I, um...
You're going to move this?
I'll second.
Ms. Armignio, Mrs. Lang? Okay, comments or questions from anyone before I kind of explain this? Okay, so last night, a number of us, myself, Mr. Ryback, Ms. Armignio, Mrs. Lang, and the board, the Business Administrator Board Secretary, Mr. Gorski, attended a New Jersey School Board presentation in Monroe schools. We had it at Brookside School. They asked if we can have this presentation in our school because it was regarding fair funding for districts that are underfunded at this time, so they were looking to host a number of presentations in different schools that are underfunded. So we said yes, and we had, it was very interesting and very informative, and what they have done is create a Fair Funding Action Committee for the state of New Jersey, and we're looking to just, to, the purpose of this is to advocate for our district's funding by not just the board or the administration, but this is how to get the community involved in advocating for funding. And since this is a time where the budget is being looked at over and over again, and money is being allocated, we thought this was a good time to put it on our agenda today. So it would be the Monroe Township, it would be the Monroe Township Fair Funding Action Committee. So we would be having our, our community coming underneath the New Jersey Fair Funding Action Committee.
Did you get shirts?
Excuse me?
Are we getting any shirts?
Shirts? If you would like a shirt, I can get you a shirt. Ms. D'Amio?
My question is, New Jersey School Boards for the past eight years hasn't done anything regarding funding. I've been to many committee meetings where funding is being talked about, and they have never spoken up in terms of funding for districts, and they speak at a lot of these state legislative committee meetings. What are they going to do for us with this?
This is from, Mr. Ryback, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm guessing that New Jersey School Boards is sponsoring this. I don't think the Fair Funding Action Committee is necessarily a New Jersey School Board Committee. It is a committee of representatives from throughout New Jersey who belong to New Jersey School Boards, who have districts that are underfunded. They started this Fair Funding Action Committee.
Okay, so are they going to?
Can I add to that?
Yes.
This is actually a subgroup, the women from, women board members from Kingsway and from Chesterfield.
Chesterfield.
Who have been very, very active in fighting fair funding, and explained the whole process, especially how it was impacting their two districts, and as in fact, the woman from Kingsway said that their students have, their track is condemned, and they can't even run track because of their lack of funding, and how it's hurting. So they have been fighting like we have for years, and their, their bigger problem had been that they were not able to get their legislators to listen to them. They have in, by the actions that they've been taking, actually changed one of their particular legislators, and he is now fully on board to helping them fight for fair funding.
I think that was the, he's the senator from Chesterfield.
Yes, from Chester, and so what they're doing is that they have come up with, they've actually come up with scripts.
Scripts?
They've come up with letters that you can send, and they're really trying to push because what they've done is identify that it's no longer that we need to get our senators and assemblymen on board. For the most part, they are on board, like, we know that, we've had ours on board here in Monroe, but what the issue is, is now to get the governor to open his eyes. So they have Sweeney on board, they're working with the head of the Senate Budgetary, so they have Sweeney, they have the assembly person on board, they're really trying to change the way that Governor Murphy is looking at it. And so they presented last night a wonderful video, even about how we got to where we are in funding, and how the law has never been enacted, how it was found to be illegal up until 2010 to even enact the SFRA. So it very, it was a very good meeting last night, in the dark, by the way, because we lost power, and we sat there, people didn't leave. We actually had this meeting in the dark at Brookside School, and the whole idea is to, how to motivate now to get, just so that it's not just board members going to Trenton, how do we get more community involvement? And they gave great hints, and they have some really good ideas of how to move the process along, because it's a matter of us now calling and talking to, on almost a daily basis, the, I think I wrote it down. Sure, thank you.
Yeah. We're supposed to?
It's an aide in...
To the governor.
Aide to the governor.
Aide to the, thank you.
Yes, that's it.
That's it, thank you. My brain went.
May I?
Yes.
So I apologize for not attending that meeting yesterday. I didn't even know that it was going on, actually. I got a number of emails from our committee people, from our Fair Funding Committee people, asking what was going on, and if there was a meeting that they weren't invited to. I had, I went to the chorus concert at the middle school and the dedication to Om Perik, which was beautiful, by the way. So I didn't get to partake in this, but I could tell you that, my feeling is that if we're not going to sue, and we're not going to take it to the streets and fight these guys, then there's really no reason to do this. I don't want to see another vehicle created where, where we're just creating a vehicle for our future, for our politicians next year, and November, and next November, and the year after that, to resurrect this issue, gain popular support by getting reelected, and then do nothing again, just like they've done this, this last time. So we have a governor who promised us fair funding, that he was going to change the funding. We had, our legislators promised us that they were going to fund the funding formula and change all these things, and then they get reelected, and they go, it's going to take years, but we're going to get to it. They're not going to get to it. We need to sue, so what I'd like to do is, if we want to do this, that's great, I'll vote for it, if everyone here tonight will let me make a motion and vote to sue the state, and then we could, we could really go at it and make some news here and make a splash. If we're not going to do that, then we're just, we're wasting our time, we're wasting my time, and I don't have time to waste.
I did check with school boards, and it was a school board-sponsored event or presentation, so I had asked if our community members could attend, and I was told no, it was just for school board members only, because I thought it would have been a great opportunity to have our funding people come and listen to what they were telling us. Ms. Armignio?
To specifically answer Jill's question, it seemed to me that school boards just sponsored the group that's an action committee. They are, they are school board members, but also, they were, actually, I came in a few minutes late, so were they school board members, those three women?
Yes.
Okay, so they were school board members, but I don't think they're really affiliated with the New Jersey School Boards. I think New Jersey School Boards put together, which by the way, is going to be on their website, maybe we can, we can put a link to it on ours, about how school, school funding is determined, they talked about all of the issues. So I think they just gave an information forum, and then the other three women are activists. And basically, what they said to your situation, they're really, they were not happy with any of the politicians, and they're there, their recommendation is that we really hammer politicians with handwritten letters and phone calls.
Phone calls, right.
So the petition and all that stuff that we've signed in the past, I totally agree with you, that went nowhere, it's almost like they didn't care, they just looked, so it's not really the board going to do something with the politicians. What it is, is our board, when we have people coming up and asking us what they, what we want them to do, the answer is, call your legislator and write a letter to your legislator. What we could facilitate is maybe some of the language and encourage people to do it. But this is, and because I agree with you, it's not about promoting the legislators, because they, for 17 years, we haven't gotten anything, we've gotten less than, than anything. So they're, they're more activists, they're looking to actually give people in communities an avenue to direct complaints to the politicians. So I don't think it was so favorable to politicians, because they really didn't speak that way.
No, this is, a lot of community members want to get involved, and they don't know how, they don't know who to call, they don't know what to write, so this group will tell you, this is the script, this is who you should call, this is, you should call every day, call these people, your legislators, your, especially the governor, and this organization will tell you what to say, who to call, and how to do it, and...
Okay, for that point, Kathy, then, how are we getting that, if we're joining this, what are we going to do for our public to actually make, to sponsor either activities? How are we getting this information? Because what good is it for us just to be part of this if we're not working with the members of our community? So how is this going to transfer, is my question, to members of our community for action?
Oh, well, hopefully, we can create some kind of a Facebook page with links to the, you know, the original Fair Funding, let me just find the name of the group again, the Fair Funding Action Committee, and have, have a link to them. They're going to send us all the information. If we can get it on our website, and then have a link to a Facebook page or something where people look all the time, and we can update that with any new information that comes in, that would be...
Yeah, but we still need to promote it in a way that results in action.
Right.
I think we just need action.
Yeah.
And I, and I apologize for cutting you off.
No, sir.
But, but, but we need, we need action. We don't, we don't need more words and more Facebook pages and more emails and more cakes or whatever, we need, we need to fight, and we need to do something. They're not listening, they don't care. They don't care, they, the politicians care about one thing, they care about themselves, how much money they're making, how beautiful they look to the public, and that's it. And this is, I could be totally off base here, but from what I understand with Kingsway and stuff, and everything like that, that their senator is Senator Sweeney, am I wrong?
No, you're correct.
So, so Senator Sweeney was one of the guys out there, a proponent of funding education and getting us more funding, and now he's turning around and telling them to fight and to sue. That's what I've heard, that he's telling his own district to do, and so it doesn't give me much hope that that's where, that that's where we're at, because if, if, if that's what the senators are saying, well then, where's our senator? Where's our, where are our assemblymen? Because they should be here telling us to sue, and they should be backing us up the same way. Instead, I don't know where they are. Our Fair Funding Committee, their members right here, they're begging to get a, to get an audience with our, with our, with our members, and that's not right. Senator Greenstein did finally reach back out, but I know that Mr. Parab, Dr. Parab, Mr. Polari, they've all been reaching out to, to our senators and our assembly people to, to do a monthly meeting, to do a meeting again with them for our funding committee, and they're, and they're getting a runaround. We, we have to make sure that they understand, and we speak their language, and what's their language? Rebellion, that's it, that's all they understand. When we're fighting them, then they understand that we mean business. Other than that, they go, oh, send me another email. I'd love to have another email from Monroe. Delete.
Well, the woman, the board member from Chesterfield told us that their senator was not on board with us at all, and they, she, they, I think two of them from Chesterfield would call him up, and they would hang up, he would hang up on them, so he wouldn't even talk to them. And he would get, I think she was saying, five to 15 calls a day from the constituents, and he ignored it, until he was getting 50, 60, 100, 150 calls a day. He turned around, and he's now supporting funding reform, and, and that's what we have to do. We have to get, we have 42,000 people in this district, we need to get people to call every day, and just, because this is budget time.
Kathy, I understand, and Ms. Kalaponowicz, I understand you, and I, and I'm not, I hate, I'm sorry to, to drag this out, but I'm, but I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is, we're the elected officials. The people vote for us, we're a representative, we're a representative republic, not a democracy, and what the people want from us is to put us in power and then have us fight. They tell us, this is what we want you to do. We put our platform out and say, this is what I stand for, they say yes or no. Once they say yes, then we have a mandate, and we have to march forward, and we have to do it. They're telling us that they want us to fight. They told me they want me to fight. They don't want us to tell them back, okay, you want me to fight, this is, this is the fight that I want you to take. Go write an email and call the senator every day, and I'm going to go play golf. They want us to fight, and that's what I, I'm here to do. After this is over, I'm going to make a motion that we sue the state. Our attorney's right here, and we'll get more funding. Get it to her.
Mr. Russo?
Yeah, no, I, I think when, this was right before Ken was elected to the board a second time, when we started the, the fair funding and the letter-writing campaign, we started to pick up a lot of momentum and interest from the public, and I think we were on the right track. And there were certain board members who did not want to have the letter directed toward Greenstein.
Right.
And I don't want to go into the details, but they discouraged me from pushing it, and told me to hold off and wait till the end of the year, and by then, it was too late. New board was, new board members were elected, you were voted president, Ken was appointed as Chair of the Committee for Fair Funding. And from my point of view, what happened from that point was, the fair funding effort, all that momentum and energy that was being built up was directed towards, and the results prove it, helping Greenstein get reelected. There was one person who won. With our fair funding effort, one person made out very well, that was her. We didn't. After that, we got some crumbs, and now it looks like we're not going to get anything for, last meeting when, when Ms. Lang read some information about a meeting that she went to, when they said in four years, which is again, the election year. So the point is, the letter-writing campaign was brought up as something that we've done in the past and didn't work, but it's not about what we did in the past and didn't work, it's about when you do it. This was, that was an election year. That was the time to exploit that situation and say, look, you guys are running for office, then you need to deliver for us. Not to get us to work to get them reelected, and then a lot of promises, because that's what happened.
If I, if I may, too, and frankly, I'm contradicting everybody tonight, and I don't mean to, but I'm going to tell you, it's not a Democrat versus Republican issue, it's a Monroe versus the state issue. We have people, we, you know, residents in this, in this, in this town, Democrats and Republicans who are suffering, who are, who are trying to pay their taxes, the taxes keep going up, we don't help the situation, and they need relief. Now, it's up to us to give them that. So, you know, did politicians use the Fair Funding Committee? I guess, but I don't, but I also can tell you that Republicans would, could use it too, you know, they could...
I'm not making it a political...
Yeah, I think it depends on the town.
What I'm saying is, it's an election year.
Yeah, it wasn't an election year. I totally, I totally, I agree with you, I'm not, I'm not saying, what I'm saying, though, is that I don't want this fight, I don't want this fight to be a Democrat versus Republican fight.
It was never that.
Because what it is, is it's a Monroe citizens against the state fight, and that's where it has to stay, because that unity, Democrats and Republicans and independents together fighting for fair funding, that's what's going to make us win. Us fighting amongst ourselves between Democrats and Republicans, who supports whom?
But that's not what happened.
That's just going to keep us fighting each other. We need to, we need all to come together, and we need to then...
That's right.
Light our torches and grab our pitchforks and go to Trenton that way.
That's right.
And that's the only way we're going to do it. So I, I get what you're saying.
That's what we didn't do, that's the point, that's what we didn't do, we, we...
Use your mic. Yeah. Get closer to...
The whole effort was steered, okay? And, you know, she came here and spoke to us, right? She threw around the figure of $5 million. There were a lot of people in the public who believed $5 million was coming, they bought it, because they came up to the mic, just waiting for that money.
No, I, I, I don't disagree.
And I know who they are.
I'm only saying, I'm sorry.
And I remember what they said.
No, that's okay, Mr. Braverman would like to speak also.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Braverman, I apologize.
I'm just trying to be a realist. A few weeks ago, the governor settled with the state employees. A day after he settled, there was an article in the paper that said he didn't know where he was getting the money to pay them. Exxon just fined $150 million for a cleanup in this state. The governor said he's taken $75 million to plug his budget. If you want to sue, I think it might be thinking out of the box, not only to sue the government, but sue our legislators as individuals. That might get, get them to look at us, but otherwise, you're spinning your wheels. They do, they get elected, they make promises, and then they start raising money for their next election, and that's the reality.
Anyone else?
But I feel better that we're going to have a Facebook page.
Okay, Mr. Ryback, we'll have our roll call.
Okay, this is for us to become a member of the Fair Funding Action Committee.
Right.
Mrs. Armignio?
For optimistic, wishful thinking, I'll vote yes. Can't hurt.
Mr. Braverman?
Sure, makes everybody feel good.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
For optimistic, wishful thinking, I'll vote yes. Can't hurt.
Mr. Breiverman?
Sure. Makes everybody feel good.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Quarino?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Mr. Russo?
With some reservations, I'll, I'll vote yes. But I would like to see what the plan is.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalaponovic?
Yes.
Madam President, motion passes.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Madam President, our attorney is trying to get your attention.
Yes.
Yeah, he voted yes.
Yes.
May I address the group here?
I would like to make a motion that we sue the state, uh, for fair funding and, and move forward, whether we sue them individually or sue them all together in one bucket, I don't care. I just want to start fighting them. I want them to take note, uh, take notice, and I want them to make good on their promises. They promised us funding. They came here and promised us millions of dollars. They told us they were going to get us all these things and pie in the sky. And the net result was just like you said, Mr. Russo. We, what did we get? A hundred and something thousand dollars after, you know, after all was said and done. Um, I, I just think that at this point, enough's enough and we need to put our money where our mouths are. If we're going to create Facebook pages, then let that Facebook page say Monroe Township sues the state of New Jersey for fair funding. So I, one, like a second.
Before we go there, Ken's got a motion.
What, before we have conversation?
Is that a motion?
We've got a motion on the...
That's my motion. Thank you.
Who seconded it? Ms. Breiverman?
Seconded by Mr. Breiverman. Okay, now we can open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I just, I would like, um, if Mr. Rutzke would like to say something because his, um, no, about Jamesburg, because they're...
I wasn't really prepared, but what do you want me to talk about?
Well, let us know what you guys are doing. You, you guys are suing the state from what I understand.
We're not suing the state.
Okay. You are.
Well, we, oh, I, you know what? I take that back. We are part of, and I don't have my notes with me.
Okay.
But we are part of a, it's either 17 or 19 school district, um, also consortium, we'll call us. And we are suing the state for, for our version of fair funding. Uh, it, it's more of a specific, we qualify as a specific school with specific stats and with these other schools.
Um, but yes, we are part of that and, and it has progressed a few levels to this point.
I really wish I had my notes so I could give you a better update.
And I think, and thank you, Mr. Rutzke, because I think that a good argument that we have is that your specific needs...
They have criteria.
Your criteria, that those students then come here. So we share that criteria. And I'd like that to be our, one of our bases, you know, for our lawsuit.
Did you have your hand up?
I was just wondering what would be the basis for the lawsuit?
That's, we, we have an in-house attorney and I think we could, we should look hard and, and look deeply into what that would entail and how we could do it. But I think we need to do it. And I think that if Jamesburg can sue, Jamesburg students come here, and they should. There are students too. But I think then we have, we, that, that, that should also be our fight.
Then why couldn't we be part of your consortium? We didn't call.
Monroe District doesn't have to meet the criteria of this group and Jamesburg does meet...
Despite the fact that we have 250 to 300 of your kids?
Doesn't. It's about 270, but it doesn't, uh, that doesn't play into it. On the whole, Monroe's stats don't meet whatever the criteria were for this group of fair funding participants.
Paul, that was the Newton superintendent?
Ms. Slank?
Newton, yes.
So the Newton Superintendent of Schools basically came up with an arbitrary figure as to what groups that he was going to look at. And, because when this came up, we had questioned it, why weren't we invited to be in it? And they just said that we didn't fit the criteria that they were looking for because of, of the way that our schools are funded and how we reach their own efficiency. So we were disqualified from being in their group to sue.
Right. Because actually the, as soon as that happened and then we became part of it, I forwarded it to our administration, the Monroe administration, thinking, okay, you're next. And then I was told back that it didn't, it doesn't, they don't meet Monroe's criteria.
Right. Because I know Dr. Kozak called right away, both you and Newton, to see if they could be, we could be part of that.
Right.
And he was told no because of the criteria that we just did not fit.
Right. Well, I, I don't, I, I, I understand that. I, and I understand the various arguments.
And I would just say to that, be careful what you wish for, right? So meeting the criteria for that lawsuit i- is not a special privilege, all right? It means we, Jamesburg, we deal with our own challenges and our own struggles.
Right. But I also live in the United States and I pretty much know that everybody sues everybody for anything. So I think we could come up with an argument.
Yeah, but there is a difference between suing the state, because that's what you're asking, and looking into suing the state.
I'm done looking. We, we've already asked to look into it and we get the same answer. It's not, it's not viable, we shouldn't do it, uh, let's write an email. Uh, I would like to, I would like for us to sue the state and see what happens. And if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. But at least maybe, maybe somebody will wake up and they'll say, uh-oh, this, there's a revolution happening in Monroe. We need to quell the violence. We need to stop the people from uprising. We need to keep our voters in check. And maybe they'll come here and do something for us.
But that's part of the problem. We don't have the community uprising yet. We all come here, we talk about funding, but nobody's a- actually contacting, I mean, you don't have...
We're the uprising. They put us here. I got 8,083 votes in the last election. The people telling me to fight and do this. I've done nothing but want to fight this for that whole time. 8,083 people, more votes than anyone's ever got, not only on the Board of Ed, but in the town. And I'm not bragging. I'm just telling you that the people have put their voice behind me. They asked me to fight and I'm fighting. So here it is. The fight's here.
Okay. Ms. Arminio?
I, I vote yes for you.
Thank you.
But, but the point is, we're fighting with taxpayers' money. I'd like to know what, what the goal is. And I, I honor you and respect your position, but we need to know what the goal is because the state has attorneys on, uh, you know, they have all kinds of attorneys and the thing they like most to do is to go to court and, you know, bill, and do billable hours. So I think we have to be prudent about it. I'm not adverse to it, but I think I'd like to know what the plan is, what's our goal? Of course, our goal is to get more money, but how much? Because they could wait us out. That's what I'm afraid of. They could wait us out.
And that's what I'm saying. I, I'd like to see the plan and what we're going to do and how we're going to do it.
I'm right, I'm not adverse...
But that's to, to look into suing the state, not to actually do it, because we don't know what the cost is to the community.
Mr. Chiarella's right. If, if, it's a double-edged sword. If we don't vote yes for this, then it doesn't go really forward. It does, it goes nowhere. If we do vote yes, we're sort of just throwing it out there with no real plan. And that's not something I've ever been comfortable with. So I don't know how, I, I'm like ambivalent about it. I think it's a good idea. I think the, the community has screamed for it, but how much do you want to spend? Millions of dollars can go into this that come, that comes away from instructional, uh, situation. So, and will it, will we win? I, I personally think, in conjunction with going to the state, we ought to all show up, and I've said this before, at the Township Council meeting, because our enrollment is 100% due to the Planning Board, which is by the way tomorrow night, and the Zoning Board, and the Township Council, who are allowing these massive developments to occur. So if we really want to fight, it's a lot closer to go across the street and let them know that high density is a bonus to the developers, not to the community. You know, the high density, um, you know, we're putting affordable housing in and I personally am, am, and, you know, a, a proponent of affordable housing, giving people equal opportunity to live in this fine community. But the builders are getting bonus density. They're getting high dense, they're only putting about 20% of affordable housing in and they're getting 80% market rate. They're getting rich and they're paying our legislators to not go forward with things. So if you want to get pitchforks and, and torches, I mean figuratively, not literally, we need to go across the street more often than maybe sue, sue the, sue the state. That's just a point of view.
Mrs. Slank?
Mrs. Arminio, I so agree with, with what you have just said. I want you to, Ken, I, I do believe that we need to, to do something and do something drastic. I just want to know, what is it going to cost us? Like, that is my fear. Like, what, do we put a cap on what it's going to cost us so that we're not spending $5 million, $2 million? I just, that, those, those little bit of unknowns are, you know, I, I, that's what I want to know. So I don't know how the right way to do this. Is it, do we change the wording of this so that we can do it?
There's a motion on the table. We have to.
Yeah.
No, you, you could, you could amend the motion.
We can amend the motion.
Right. Mr. Russo?
As much as I, I would support the, the suit, the thing I, I see is, I do, I would like to see a plan first. And here's, here's the reason why. When that Fair Funding Committee started, and I brought this up back then, that we didn't look at all the options. I mean, if you're going to have a committee which is going to develop a strategy, you look at the options that you, that you can take, all right, to, to get the goal that you want. We talked about a number of things and I brought them up at the, at the board meeting. One was even looking at becoming a charter school. I know everybody would jump at that, but it was just an option. A lawsuit was another. Uh, supporting Senator Greenstein was another. Writing a letter, uh, you know, to get her to move was, was another, or to write to both candidates. All of those options should have been carefully studied and developed. And they weren't. Senator Greenstein came in, made an offer, I, you know, she led everybody around and from then on, the, the committee just took on a life of its own in support of her. The whole program, that, and that's one of the reasons why I couldn't see going along with it anymore, because it wasn't the committee that was developing a strategy.
Well, it was. I just have to correct that, because it wasn't, the, Frank, the only, the only game in town are the Democrats. I don't know if you've seen out there. I mean, there, there's one Republican councilman in Monroe. The rest are Democrats. The state is entirely run by Democrats, or at least our district. So when you want to, when you reach out to work with government, you have to work with the people who are in power. That's the whole, that's the whole, that's the whole way of, of doing it and getting anything done.
I was, I was right here and I said it. What we're going to do is we're going to take one option, it's not going to work, we're going to jump to a second and then a third. That's exactly what we're doing now.
Frank, Frank, but we had everyone here, not just Linda Greenstein. Then we had the Republicans come. We had everybody, we had, we had everybody as part of our committee. We looked at everything. The, 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 the Democrats at that time came, they had an idea to go to the state...
Okay, we're going to one at a time.
We're not making it political.
No.
I'm just saying though, it wasn't, it, you know, I want you to understand, I, I ran the, the, I, you know, I, I was chair of the committee. I was not sitting here in a shill for Linda Greenstein and for the, for the, for...
I'm not saying that.
I was, I was here fighting for funding. And that's what it was all about. And, and what happened when I said, let's go to the other side now and hear all sides, not just the Democrats. But what happened then?
Mr. Russo, let, let Mr. Chiarella...
The Republicans, then the, you know, then the Republicans came in and we listened to them and we, and we heard their side. And that, and that's what we did. But, but, but at that point, then people were dropping away and then the Democrats got upset, because we had, we weren't, uh, we weren't here for them. And then we went and we, we marched on Linda Greenstein's office. We did, our committee. And we delivered a letter to her. You were there. And, 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 and so we did those things. So it wasn't a one-sided, we didn't do anything except cater to the Democrats. We were doing everything we possibly could within the confines of where we live, which is, which is run by Democrats. If you want to get something done, you have to work with the people who are elected. If people want to work with Board of Ed members to get something done, they're not going to go to White Castle and talk to people there. They're going to come to us, because we're the, we're the people who are elected, even if they don't like us. And a lot of people don't like us. But I, but that's, you know, that's, that's just reality.
Ken, what I'm saying is, if, if the committee had functioned the way I expected the committee to function, right now you would have more details and specifics about a lawsuit, because that option would have been developed. We wouldn't be doing it now. It would have been done back then. You don't just go with one option, follow the senator. All of those things should have been developed. There should have been a group assigned to each one and let them develop it.
I believe, I believe that was what was happening with that Fair Funding Committee.
Well, where's the plan for the, for the lawsuit then?
Because there is no plan, Frank. I'm not an attorney. And our, and our, and our group isn't an attorney. We have an attorney on staff though, and all I'm saying is, let's vote to put it in her hands. If she comes back and says it's not viable, we can't do it. And we go to an outside attorney and they say it's not viable, we can't do it, go away, you're, you guys are going to fail then, that's fine.
The plan is what I'm looking for.
We need to, we need to do something.
The plan. What are the criteria? What are you...
Okay, so, may I just say something? If we wanted to do this to see if it's a viable action, then we have to make a motion to look at suing the state, not to sue the state. It's very different. And at, at this point, I, I don't think, nobody...
We, I, I made a motion months ago about it, for us to look into suing the state. And I said that I wanted the backing for our group to be able to do that and everybody voted yes. And then it didn't go anywhere. So, you know, we, we, and then I'm hearing that we don't, we don't have, there's no will to do it, uh, the, you know, the, the, the senator and the assembly people won, and we're just having meetings and, and basically spinning our wheels. If we're not going to put any teeth into it, then don't do it. And, and, and then we could just, at least we know that the Facebook page and this other stuff that everybody wants to do now is also useless and is not going to get us anywhere. So at least we're, at least then we're being honest with the public.
Mrs. Slank?
Mr. Chiarella? First of all, I'd like to volunteer my time, because that's what I do. So, I'd like to volunteer my time to help. But I, I just wrote up a little amendment to your resolution, that if, I think if we give it one month's time to put this plan together, in literally one month, and that's why I said I would volunteer my time to help do this, to put the plan together. So, I would like to, I'd like to make a motion.
No, you would like to amend the motion.
Ask him to amend the motion.
I'd like to make, asking you to amend the resolution to develop a plan including cost, timeline, and desired outcomes in order to bring this back to the Board of Ed for the purpose of filing a lawsuit against the state of New Jersey. And that we would have this ready to be brought to the Board, back to the Board of Ed for discussion at our June meeting.
And, 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 and I just want to say, I don't know that you can do that in a month's time. It's not even a month. So, I don't know that you even want to put a timeline on that because...
No, we have to put a timeline. I think it's two, two or three months.
Like, or just June or July meeting, so that we can, we have to have a timeline, so that we get it done.
Because June is very tough with everything that we have going on right now.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to amending that if we have a timeline.
To, to, so, do, would you, is July okay then?
I would need to have a second to...
You want me to read one?
Well, she has it, she has it written down.
You have it written down?
Yeah. So, wait, 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 wait. Should we do, to bring it back to the board meeting for July?
Mr. Ryback, you wanted to be secretary of this.
Mrs. Lang?
To bring it back?
Mrs. Lang?
I'm sorry.
So, read your motion the way you, you would like your amendment to be.
Okay.
Read that amendment.
I amend the, amend the resolution to develop a, okay, to develop a plan including cost, timeline, and desired outcomes in order to bring back, to bring this to the Board of Ed at our July meeting, so that we can move forward in discussion of filing a lawsuit against the state of New Jersey.
Now, I need a second to that amendment. Second, I'll second.
Who's seconding it?
Michelle.
Michelle, so Michelle is seconding the revised, the motion to revise. Okay, hang on one second. So, that was Patty Lang and Michelle Arminio. So, we, we need a roll call.
Well, he needs to agree, right?
I agree.
He, I thought he had agreed. But we need a roll call to accept the amendment to the motion.
To add the amendment to the motion.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Am I allowed to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Quarino?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
I was told by counsel I have to abstain on this one.
Yeah, I think you have to.
Mrs. Kalaponov?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes to...
To amend the motion. So, now we have to vote. Is there still comments and questions?
Well, I have comments related to the original...
Well, now the original one is gone. We now have an amended motion.
Not the original motion, the original, the, the Fair Funding, excepting the Fair Funding thing.
We did that.
Yeah, that's over.
We already did that.
That's over.
You voted already.
I know, but I have questions.
Well, that's over.
I have a question.
So, we're, we're, we're now discussing the, which is a new motion, which is Mrs. Lang's motion.
I have a question, then.
Yes.
I want to call on my colleague, Mr. Rutske, again. Since you guys were, gotten along so far with this lawsuit, can you give any insight on how you developed the criteria, what you were using?
Well, I will say that we, first I'll say I don't know how far along we are in practicality as far as getting an outcome, but I know we've had a few updates along the way of, you know, jumping hurdles or what have you. But, we didn't set it up, Newtown did.
Newton did, right.
Newton, excuse me, Newton.
Newton developed the criteria.
And they just invited us on.
And invited certain districts.
I see.
So, we didn't, yeah, we didn't start this from the ground up, and we didn't develop the criteria.
So, they developed the criteria and they saw that you fit into that argument.
Correct. Which, you know, so, you can set up your own version of criteria and you can invite other people to, that are similar to Monroe, which I would be surprised if that hasn't already been thought of, but, because there is strength in numbers.
Same thing.
Nineteen schools who are powerful than one school.
I'm just wondering if the school that started the criteria, if, maybe they can shed some insight on how they did it.
I promise you when I get home, I'll go back to my original notes and see how this all started and see what I can get for you from that, from Newton.
Can I ask something? Can we also get the PowerPoint, the ladies sent to you?
Yes, we're gonna be getting, we're gonna be getting that, yes.
And can we also reach out to New Jersey School Boards and ask them, why are they not actively involved in this issue? Because this is the number one issue across the state, and they do not get involved in it at all, and that's a disgrace.
It is.
It really is. They need to be involved. They need to speak up for all the people who are paying them.
Can I just say that I think, interestingly enough, they speak, I've seen school boards speak when they don't want the schools that are gonna be reduced in their funding to be penalized. That's where I've seen school boards put their energy.
Speak up.
And that's when they speak up, is, you know, you've been giving, as Michelle says, past practice doesn't necessarily make it right.
Right.
So, they've been giving X, Y, Z, a hundred million, we can't pull them back to only eighty million, how will they ever survive?
Well, there are, there are...
So, that, that's when school boards speak up, unfortunately, not on behalf of towns like Monroe who need the extra twenty million.
Right, but that's, we pay them, they need to speak for us, too.
I completely agree. Sorry.
That, that's okay. There are some districts that get a hundred and seventy percent of their taxes, of their school aid. A lot of them get over a hundred percent, a hundred and sixty-six, a hundred and forty-seven percent, and then you have all the unfunded, underfunded districts. So, there's no comments left or questions. We can vote on the original amendment, original motion with Mrs. Lang's amendment, and then Mrs. Lang, if we could have that written down so that we could send it to Mr. Gorsky.
Sure.
Okay.
That was a good idea.
Yes, well, we're gonna need that, because I didn't write that down. So, we'll have a roll call.
Do you want me to read it again?
If you would like.
That's a good idea, read it again.
Right.
So, a motion to develop a plan including cost, timeline, and desired outcomes in order to bring to our July meeting to further the discussion regarding filing a lawsuit against the state of New Jersey for fair funding. Is that, is that right?
I think you just added stuff.
I'm just making sure, I just, I added the fair funding at the end because it was a lawsuit against YO.
You can't add without...
Okay, never mind, against the state of New Jersey, no fair funding.
Right, because that was what we voted on, so you cannot add something to it.
You're right.
You're laterally. All right, so...
Let me get a transcript of it.
When we read this, when we look at it again, nobody will know what we're doing.
No.
So, we'll have a motion on, a roll call.
Okay. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Chiarela?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Quarino?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Abstain.
Abstain. Ms. Kalaponov?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, we will go...
Madam President.
Mr. Braverman?
Can I just make one statement?
Sure.
Would, if you really want to make an impact, hit the national news, why don't we have a couple of hundred kids, take the state to small claims court and sue them for their own tuition? Well, that's thinking out of the box, that's getting people involved, and you'll all be on television, you'll all be re-elected. Mary Smith, please take a note.
Okay, we're gonna move on with the agenda. So, we're going to public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to...
I thought it was a good idea.
It was. The kids would have to pay for it, though, and that would, you know...
We'll pay for it.
No, we're not gonna go there. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. We have a four-minute time limit, and you can speak to the agenda or off the agenda.
Anthony Presios, I had a question, Wade. You should sue for discrimination because they're discriminating against our kids because we're, we're taking care of our kids, so they expect us to pay more, that's the problem. Okay, from last week, I asked the president of the Board, when was Dr. Kozak informed about not, his contract not being renewed?
You asked me last time.
And I'm asking you again.
It was March 27th.
Okay, who signed it and gave it to him?
I will not speak about the contract.
Did the Board vote on this letter or whatever was handed to him telling him he wasn't gonna be renewed?
Dr. Contract, Dr. Kozak's contract is a personnel matter and therefore is by statute confidential.
I'm just asking if they were voted on?
I will not, I will not speak to the contract.
See, you skate around it all the time.
I, I cannot do that.
Everybody here knows that there should be a vote on this contract, on the, the letter that you gave him, was it voted on?
I cannot answer that question.
You know, I'm here today, last, last time I was here, there was a hundred people in here. The teachers came here because they wanted their contract, and I think the, the teachers deserved their contract, but I'm a little disappointed. You know, we don't have a superintendent. I'm up here fighting because there's nepotism and cronyism in the schools, and the teachers tell me this, and I don't see any teachers here today. I'm glad the union reps are here, I'm glad you're here, but they should be here fighting for that man's job because he's helping you. And we should have a superintendent. And we see the Board is skating around every question that's being asked. What's, it's a simple question, did the Board vote on his contract, on his, on his letter to, to say that he wasn't gonna be reinstated? That's all I'm asking. You know, the teachers need to get up here and voice their opinion. Thank you.
Victor Cooper, 525 Abbott Court, Monroe. I have a couple of things. One, I want to support Mr. Chiarela in his effort to go and sue the state. The state representatives that we have have skirted around this issue endlessly over time. I had a discussion with Senator Greenstein when we didn't get our funding originally, and what she told me was the Democrats have a plan, and when that plan is implemented, we will get our full funding. I said, "What's your plan?" She said, "To have a millionaire's tax." I said, "Lots of luck, that will never float in New Jersey." That was her plan, in order to get more money, rather than use the money that's supposed to be dedicated to funding schools, she was gonna try and get more money going around through a millionaire's tax, which of course never is going to happen. So, I'm glad you were exploring suing the state because I think the time for that has long since passed. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm talking about this without full knowledge, and I know that, I know I don't know what I don't know, but I think it's reprehensible that a man like Dr. Kozak, who I have worked with for about two years as a result of being on Mr. Chiarela's committee and before that, I am absolutely shocked at a person that I think the highest possible regard for, have the highest possible regard for, who I have sat in one-on-one with him and one, and with other people, him present not in the school board meetings, but in his office and the Board of Ed, and I am so thoroughly impressed by his talent, his wisdom, and the way in which he conducts himself, that we would not extend this man's contract. I think it's a sin, and it's gonna hurt us in the long run.
Andy Pelory, 16 St. James Street. Quite honestly, folks, I come here hoping that I don't have to get up to the microphone and have a conversation, but every time I come here, I want to jump out of my skin to talk to you because the last half an hour, forty-five minutes of conversation is like a layperson's conversation here. And I'll tell you why I say that. But before I say that, first of all, I want to thank the Board for renewing the contract for the teachers. Thank you very much. I know it's a team effort, and we appreciate that. Next thing is Paul Rutske. I'm extremely impressed with your participation on the Board, and I wish more, more Board members are knowledgeable of the knowledge that you represent when you come to the Board. Thank you very much. With the permission on my chair, Ken Chiarela, Ken, if it's okay with you, I want to share what has transpired in the past few days. We were talking about suing the state, we have looked into that as a part of the Fair Funding Committee. We have had a couple of meetings. Since then, we've been sidetracked, quite honestly, by the Board and the politicians in the sense that we want to have a meeting every month with them and come up with a plan on the items that we can sue the state on. Suing the state is a great idea, but what are you gonna sue them on? You're not giving enough money, so I'm gonna sue you? That doesn't work that way. And I think our Board Attorney has looked into it, and she spoke to it, at least to the, our Board Chair, or the Committee Chair for the Fair Funding on it. We were very close to identifying at least one or two items, one of them being transportation, and our legislative team is working with us to identify that and say, "This is the area that you can sue." If anybody's sitting here and saying that our legislators are not telling us to sue, that's a wrong information. They are telling us to sue, but they want us to be careful on what we're suing for. Okay? Now, we talked about it almost as if the Fair Funding Committee hasn't done anything, and I question you guys on what you're doing. The reason is, the Senate Budget Committee is having hearings over the past few weeks. Did any one of you bother to go to the State Senate Budget Hearing Meetings? Thank you. There are kids from this township, there are members of the public, are going to these meetings to discuss it. I, myself, along with two other people, testified in front of the Budget Committee on Monday. Do you know the tact I took to bring Monroe Township to the front, to the forefront of the discussion, was to say that a hundred and thirty million, a hundred and thirty-five million dollars is the budget for our schools, you pay three million dollars to us, on top of that, through the gun, because of the lack of gun restrictions, our security personnel gotta be paying a little bit more, and the, and the Board of Education needs to bear that additional money. Paul Sorlo got it. And he said, "Andy, thank you very much for coming and saying it, but you know that this is not about school funding." I said, "With all due respect, Senator, this is not about school funding, but at the end of the day, the bill gotta be paid for by the Board of Education." So, there are a lot of different ways we can do this. In terms of funding, I don't know if you saw the newspapers, forty-five million dollars short of the projections they had by the time the budget goes out in the state. So, the state needs money, and at the end of the day, irrespective of how much we fight, I know we're entitled for another five million dollars, but it's fully funded. What I'm expecting right now, and I also had a conversation with Steve Sweeney at the same meeting, all these senators walk the halls, if we walk the halls, we have a one-on-one conversation with these guys. I think we're gonna get another, maybe double it, for what we're getting, which is maybe seven fifty or eight hundred, that's peanuts. But from their perspective, they're doubling the aid they're giving us. So, that's the big disconnect is, we aren't gonna get the five million dollars, what we're gonna get is incremental. So, we are doing things, as Ken mentioned, we are looking at ways to sue the state, and we are meeting with the, the State Senator and the two Assemblymen in the next couple of weeks, the meeting is forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Prakash Parab, 33 Dana Drive. Prakash Parab, 33 Dana Drive, thank you. Guys, June 30th, the budget will be finalized. Wake up. I have come and said several times, write letters, go and lobby, none of y'all. Me and Dr. Kozak, in first week of April, April 10th or 11th, went and gave a testimony. And there were, your Chester, whatever your district you talk, they were there. Small children, seven-years-old children came and spoke, gave a testimony, and you guys were not there. Now, what is the day today? May 23rd. And June 30th, the budget is finalizing, and now you all are thinking to sue and decide in July. Guys, you all are too late. You know, my friends, we already wrote seventy letters, okay? I told in the last meeting, draft a letter and send it. We have already sent a letter. I'll send you all tomorrow the copy of that, what we wrote to the Governor and the legislators. So, you guys are late. Anyway, think over it. Now, I'm coming, today's special meeting, okay? So, I have specific questions. I have sent to you, President, yesterday. Did BOE follow the bylaws with respect to reappointment of Superintendent Dr. Kozak?
And I will say that Dr. Kozak's contract is a personnel matter and therefore by statute is confidential. As indicated previously, Dr. Kozak's employment by the Monroe Township Board of Education terminates effective June 30th, 2018. The Board will make no further comment regarding the superintendent, as the Board does not commit, comment, comment on pending legal matters.
I will, okay, pending legal matters, thank you, we are taking notes. I'll repeat, another one question. Did BOE President follow the bylaws with respect to the decision of reappointment of Superintendent Dr. Kozak, as per the law, 18A 17-20.1?
And again, I will tell you that the superintendent's contract is a personal matter and therefore deemed confidential.
The decision, the third question, the decision on the reappointment of Superintendent Dr. Kozak was by majority vote in BOE?
Again, the super, the superintendent's contract is deemed confidential and therefore cannot be discussed by the Board in public.
Okay, we are taking those notes. Thank you. Now, one thing, now, don't come out and tell me we are busy with writing this, funding and all that. B, the students are here, teachers are here, they're waiting, what you all are doing for the children. So, in June, my understanding is, we will have what will be the next referendum and what it contains. Secondly, in June, you all will decide about the homework policy. Third, where is, what is happening with the policy with respect to arming our officers, security officers, okay? That, those are the three important things, please. President, can you please tell me what is happening with the referendum, please, and when we'll have the referendum? And always, for last four months, we are telling that, when you come up with a referendum, please include middle school, high school expansion, and kindergarten, full-day kindergarten. So, that is our request. And we want to see the projections of the school, what is the projections taking, and a very smart decision we want, smart decision, and we want to hear from you. Can you do it, please, in June?
I, I could tell you right now that the homework policy will be discussed in June. The security officers' policy has already been passed, so as of right now, we have, I know, two schools that have our own in-house armed security, five schools?
As of today.
Would you like to respond to that, Mr. Piero?
As of today, five of our schools.
Use the microphone, please, so it's on. Ms. Piero, could you just use Mr. Braverman's microphone?
We, we have five schools that have our own security, three more, we're still working with Monroe Police, and by the end, by the end of next week, we'll have our own in-house security.
Thank you, Office.
Thank you.
What about the referendum, President?
At this point, the Steering Committee has reconvened. We have asked to have a member of the MTEA on that Steering Committee so we could get input and support from the teachers. We will not have a plan by June. There is a lot of things that we have asked for. We've asked for an updated demographic report. We are looking at to projected costs, because the costs have risen since the last referendum. So we need projected costs for a middle school, an additional elementary school, and a addition to the high school. We're not going to have these things before the summer. It's, the probability of getting a referendum on the ballot before December is not good because of time constraints. If we needed a, if we wanted to get a referendum in, on the ballot in October, we needed to have it all ready by April. So there, if we change the referendum in any, in any way, we have to go back to the state, and that takes...
Six months.
It takes six months.
So this year, we are not going to have anything then?
I could tell you that we're not having anything in October. I don't know if we'll be able to get anything on the ballot before next, 2019.
Thank you, President. But we are, I'm going to say only one state, thank you for your permission.
I'm sorry, Mr. Parab, your, your time is, has expired.
We're not happy with what you have done with Dr. Kozak. Thank you.
Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I just had a question. I know it was, it has been brought up at several meetings about the public forum. And I did go online and pull up the bylaws of the board, and number 0164, conduct of board meetings. It lists the entire order of business. It has public forum number one, public forum number two. Public forum number three does have a note next to it that it's for closed session items only. But public forum number one does not say agenda items only. Where is that policy written?
I, I believe it's in the policy. I would have to look it up.
It's not. I have it right here off the, off the website. This is the policy. It's number 0164, conduct of board meetings.
It's not on there. Excuse me, Ms. Arminio?
It's not conduct of board meetings. I believe it's how...
It has the entire, the order of business shall be as follows. Call to order, moment of silence, roll call, New Jersey open public meeting statement. It goes on public forum number one, superintendent's report, business administrator's report, board president's report, other board of education business. Public forum two, closed session. Public forum three, comma, closed session items only.
It's not on there.
It's district policy 0164?
It's from the bylaws, yes. Conduct of...
It's in a different policy.
No, there was actually a policy that does...
We have it, we have it, because I, that's what we use.
Where would that be located? Because in...
It's in the bylaws.
That is the bylaw.
It's in the bylaws.
That is the bylaw. That is the bylaw that is on the district website.
I know, but it's a different bylaw.
How could it be a different bylaw? It, this is the conduct of board meetings.
It is how an agenda, it's in, it's in how the agenda is written up, and that's what we have always...
And that's what this says.
It's a different, I'm telling you, it's a different bylaw.
Can somebody please send that to, can that be posted somewhere? Or, you're the head of policy, Ms. Arminio, like if...
I have the same one you have. I pulled that out, 0164, today.
We'll, we'll look it up, and we will send it to you.
I, I made a, a comment about it, too.
Okay. And I just, again, going with the superintendent's contract, we sat here and talked for, I don't know what, almost an hour about suing the state. What I don't understand is, if we don't have cause to sue the state, does that mean that we, we're saying that we don't, we're not owed any more money? So if we're not owed any more money, what are we, what are we continuing to fight for? If we're not ready to sue the state, that's kind of saying then, we're not owed money. If we don't have cause to have more money, then what are we fighting for? And if we're worried about spending money on a lawsuit, to fight for what we really think we, we believe in our hearts that Monroe deserves more funding. I believe that. I believe we are not getting our fair share. We're afraid to spend money on a lawsuit, yet we are going to be facing a large lawsuit by what we did to Dr. Kozak. Why doesn't anybody care about that? That, I would rather spend the money fighting for funding than paying taxpayer money to be sued for what this board is doing to Dr. Kozak. That is a waste of our taxpayer money. Our money should be going toward fighting for funding, fighting to get money, not, not paying for a lawsuit for what this board is doing wrong.
Krishna DeKale, Levin Jake Place. I have a question about Dr. Kozak, right? While you say it's a personal contract, it affects the entire school district. Why is it prohibited from saying why he was let go or who voted on it? This should be transparency on who actually voted to let go of the superintendent. This affects the entire school district. You cannot hide behind the fact that it's a personal matter or it's a contract.
It is a personnel matter.
Personal to whom? You? Or the, is it personal to you?
Not personal.
Not personnel, personnel.
Yeah, is it personnel to you, or is it him?
It's personnel.
I know that. I know the difference, Madam.
So personnel matters are confidential. We cannot discuss personnel matters.
Okay, so now, now let's assume that even if you voted, if you did it in the best of legal interest and everything else, and you're covered legally. I have a question for you. Where is your search with the next superintendent? How much are you going to spend on the next superintendent? Is that in the, is that in the budget you have? What are you looking for in the next superintendent? What are you looking for when you go out and interview candidates? What is that you expect the next superintendent to bring to the table that will make the next superintendent successful? Who is spearheading the referendum in his absence? You'd have, do you have the answers to that?
We have not even discussed a superintendent's search.
So you don't know what you're going to do, but you let go of the man you have in place?
And at this time, on the agenda, we will be looking for an acting or an interim superintendent.
So you don't have an answer? You just are looking for one, and you're hoping to get one before the other man goes?
That is a discussion for closed session, which is a personnel matter, which is confidential.
I know what the difference between personnel and personnel is. I have, I have degrees, I have multiple degrees, okay? Don't tell me that. Thank you.
My name is Ira Nelson. I live at 87 Crescent Way. I'd like to thank Mr. Chiarella for...
Could you please raise your microphone, so that we can hear you?
Bringing some sanity to these proceedings. It's kind of frustrating to sit back here and listen to what's going on for a, for quite a long time, and perhaps Rip Van Winkle is waking up here. A lawsuit seemed, for a long time, to be the only solution that we really had, other than fun and games, and wasting everybody's time, and going through motions, and listening to politicians. And I think finally, thanks to you, perhaps something might be done. There really is only one solution, and that is to sue, and that's been evident for more than a year. Why you folks have not taken that approach, I really don't understand. But let me move on to something else. The bond issue was voted down. And I'm assuming it's going to be coming up sometime in the future. Has anybody done an analysis as to why it was voted down?
Yes, we have done that.
And what, what, what reasons did you come up with as to why it was voted down?
There was a, a survey that was sent out to the parents. I, I think, and, and other people in the community had access to that, too. I think the, the two major points was the, the growth of the township and stopping the development, and the second one was taxes. Those were the two biggest issues. And then there was a lot of other things. People didn't want to support the referendum before the teacher contract was done. There were people who were not happy that there was not, the high school added to that, to the referendum. So there was a, a few different issues as to why. But the major ones was the development of the township and the taxes, the tax impact.
And it's your opinion that something will change the next time it goes, goes, comes up for vote? I think it'll probably be voted down by even a greater majority than it was the first time.
It depends on, I think...
What will change? What is going to change?
We don't know what we're going to be putting on the ballot at this point, and it would be the consensus of the Board of Education. There'll be a recommendation by the administration and a vote by the Board of Education as to what the referendum will be.
What happens to that property, that golf course, that we took over by, I, I believe we took over by eminent domain?
The golf course is owned by the township. The Board of Education can have that township, can have that piece of property anytime we wish to have it. The only thing that is subject to discussion is the cost of that property, which is between the former owner and the township. That has not been decided yet.
It still has not been decided.
The cost of that piece of property.
I remember being here in December, and we were told it was a slam dunk, that it was, it was, it was a done deal.
That is not the Board of Education. That is between the township and the former owner.
Lot of problems, a lot of issues just on this bonding. Okay, thank you.
Where, where, you, public forum? We already have somebody at the microphone.
You leave it.
That's okay.
Pick it up.
Can you come back again?
We're only allowed to come up to the public forum once per public forum.
Sorry.
It's not the first time. It's not the first time. You come on, turn up here twice, I can tell you that...
Mr. Presioso? Mr. Presioso? We've had, we're only having one public forum, and in the, in the bylaws, it states that you can only come up once, four-minute time limit.
You allow anybody that's placate you, but when it ends, you...
Mr. Presioso, we've had two or three public forums. Usually, we have three public forums. Today, we're only having one.
Good evening. My time starts now, right?
It does.
Okay. Ramragnath, 6 Ovinstive, Monroe. Question one, right? So what is the general procedure in terms of reappointment or no reappointment of any superintendent of Monroe Township School District?
Well, there's, it's contractual, and it's by statute. So whatsoever in a contract, or whatsoever in the law, then that's how you would go about following the procedure to rehire, reappoint, whatever.
Right. So in that, what is the role of the Board of Ed members?
What is the role? We evaluate the superintendent every year.
Right. I'm talking about the end of the contract, the reappointment or not.
I will not talk about the contract.
No, I'm not talking about Dr. Kozak's contract. I'm talking about general.
I can't express general, because everybody's contract for superintendents is different based on the requirements of a community, and what's, what your needs are, and the person in charge, your superintendent.
Okay. Just last point on that. I know the township spent a year and a half, or whatever it is, to find Dr. Kozak. And I cannot believe that we are again on that same track. And this Board of Education, the BoE members, and the President is not taking the public's plea of reinstating or reappointing Dr. Kozak. That is very, very, very disappointing for all of us. Second, second point, on the referendum, and I'm again disappointed that we are not even trying hard to have something by October on the ballot. I thought we had done 80% of the work. So if we had just to add the high school, even that was projected in one of the first referendums, or the thoughts about it. So I don't understand why we cannot work towards an October timeframe and make it happen. We are desperate. We're spending money. Our kids are suffering. Why doesn't the Board of Ed members and the President see that anguish and that frustration, and try to make this happen for October?
Because we have already passed the October deadline, which would have been April, to get this on the ballot by October.
Yeah, but from what I heard, it looks like nothing has been done. You're asking for all these studies to be redone again. What a waste of time and money. I thought you just did all that.
Well, if we, if we decided to go out with the exact same referendum, it could have been done. We decided we wanted to hear from the public. We did a survey. We're looking at the cost to add at the high school. If we do that, and we decide to go out for that, it will take six months at least for the state to approve that. So, six months from now would be November. Right?
Okay. I, I just conclude with that. I just feel if there's a will, there is a way. I'd like to really see the Board of Ed members and the President figure out a way in 2018 to make this happen. If not, I just feel that you guys are not listening to the public. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we will close the public portion, and closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance to Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject: school ethics issues, personnel, and matters falling within the attorney-client privilege with respect to these subjects. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be discussed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Moved by Mr. Chiarella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lang. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, the board will move into closed session.
How long?
I'm going to guess an hour.
I'll never...
It could be more, it could be less.
And is there action after, can action be taken?
There could be actions.
It's not on the agenda that says, it does not say on the agenda that the action can be taken.
Yes, the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed following, following closed section, action may be taken.
Where is that? On here?
It's, it's on every closed session. Hey, at this time, the board will move back into public session, and I have a, a resolution to read. I move that the Monroe Township Board of Education direct the Business Administrator Board Secretary through the Human Resources Department to initiate the posting for five school days of the position of Acting Superintendent of Schools. The position start date of July 1st, 2018. I further move that in the event that there are no qualified internal applicants meeting board approval, the board directs the Business Administrator Board Secretary through the Human Resources Department to advertise for five school days the position of Interim Superintendent of the Schools with the position start date of July 1st, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mrs. Lang, any comments or questions?
That's the slow board secretary.
You know what? I think I am going to make a comment.
All right. Oh, Ms. Arminio?
Yes. Based on the, the public concerns about us not renewing Dr. Kozak's contract, I would like to say that I think this is, this is unfortunate, it shouldn't be happening, and I think we should have reconsidered. That's it.
Okay, Mr., Mr. Brabek? Will we have a roll call?
Nope, we have to get a paper.
Ms. Arminio?
No.[1754.86]